Good morning and welcome to the town meeting preview meeting for our town meeting in April of 2020. For our, just to remind everybody, the town meeting is April 27th through the 30th in the high school gymnasium last year. The first order of business this morning is to vote to open the annual town meeting warrant, and I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Is there a second? Well, I'd like you, if we could, have, Susan, could you read the motion, please?
A move to open the annual town meeting warrant on December 7th and close the warrant on January 10th, 2020, at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, so the plan for this morning is we will just be going through the various components of our annual town meeting warrant, and I will invite representatives from various committees or town departments to come up and briefly explain the warrant articles that they anticipate to be on the warrant for the 2020 town meeting. Some of you have submitted slides, and Erin will help us make sure we stay on track with those. There's no need to go into a great amount of detail on the proposed warrant articles, just present them as what you're anticipating now. And then, of course, as we just heard in the motion, the warrant is now open and will remain open until January 10th. So I will begin by reporting out to you the articles that I believe will be on the warrant from the select board. We have not voted on any of these yet, so they need to be viewed as tentative. So the first of these is a stabilization fund for the middle school project, which we have a middle school feasibility study going on now, and we anticipate that they will come to town meeting or a special town meeting sometime in 2020 with a proposal to move ahead with that project. The finance committee has recommended to the select board that we propose a warrant article to create a stabilization fund for the middle school, and they have recommended that we put $2 million from free cash into this stabilization fund. The select board will be discussing that and other warrant proposals at our meeting on December 16th. The second is a special liquor li, I'm skipping, as you can see, I'm skipping the pollinator bill banning neonicotinoids, and I'm also gonna skip the prohibition on expansion of fossil fuels until the end of my remarks. So the next one is special liquor license. As you know, we have a number of organizations in town who put on events on a regular basis for organizations and for their own performances, like at the Umbrella, 51 Walden Street, Verro Farm, Salt Box Kitchen. And for each of those, they have to come to the select board for a one-day special license for each of those events, and there are limits to the number of one-day special licenses you can get. The select board has been reluctant to give them a regular liquor license because we only have a couple of them left, and if we gave them, then a restaurant might come to town who would actually need it to have a viable business plan. So it turns out there's a provision in Massachusetts general law that a town can petition the state assembly to provide special liquor licenses to organizations like that, that would allow them to go ahead with one-day events without having to fill out the paperwork and coming to get the select board approval. They would still have to go through approval to get their liquor license, but it would be special in the sense that it does not continue on after the organization goes away. So if a restaurant, for example, changes hands, the liquor license can be transferred to the new owner, but in this case, it could not. It lapses and returns to the select board. So the select board anticipates a warrant article where we would go to the general court and ask them to provide us with five or six, we haven't decided yet, of these special liquor licenses, and then we would invite people and organizations to apply for them, and they still pay a regular fee. So more to come on that. The next is a means test of property tax exemption. You know that we, a number of years ago at town meeting, approved a warrant article to apply to the general court for a home rule petition to provide tax relief for citizens who have lived in town for 10 years or more, who are over 60, and meet certain income and wealth criteria. We passed that, the general court approved it, and it's been in effect. As part of the home rule petition that we submitted, there was a sunset clause, that is, the bill would lapse after three years. In addition, as we went to implement this law with the assessor's office, it turns out it was very complicated to actually calculate the income that was necessary to determine eligibility. So the Tax Fairness Committee has been working to come back to town meeting with a new law that revises the old law in two respects. It eliminates the sunset clause, and it corrects, or, excuse me, it changes the way income is calculated for eligibility to make it much simpler. So we will come, they will come to town meeting with this warrant article, and we will again submit it if it's passed to the legislature, and if the legislature passes that law, the sunset clause will be eliminated, and that will be the tax exempt bill. So that will come to us. We have received a letter from our affordable housing folks to make an allocation, again, this year of free cash of $500,000. You recall, we did that last year, and we anticipated we might do it for another year or two until the legislation that we passed with respect to affordable housing was adopted by the general court. So I suspect we'll have that warrant article. Again, the select board has not made a determination of that, but we do have a letter from our friends in the housing field to do that. Then there are, as you can look up there, you can see six remaining articles on my list before I get to the two that were skipped. The background is the following. If it turns out you submit a bill, a proposed bill, to the state legislature, as we did last year at town meeting for a property transfer tax and for a building permit surcharge for our affordable housing, and we did two years ago to give 17-year-olds the vote, if those bills are not passed during the current legislative session, we, as a town, have to reaffirm them and resubmit them to the legislature. So the first three that you see, Article 25, Article 26, and Article 18 from the 2018, are reaffirmations of those three warrant articles. The first was for property transfer tax, Article 26, for special building permit surcharge, and Article 18, allowing 17-year-olds to vote. That's if they don't pass it. The next three articles are if they pass those pieces of legislation by the end of the current legislative session, which ends December 31st. So I'm just alerting you that we will submit six warrant articles, and then after December 31st, we will know whether these bills have been passed or they haven't been passed. If they've been passed, the first three that say reaffirm will be dropped from the warrant and not actually submitted. If they are passed, then the ones that say affirmed will actually show up on the warrant articles. Is that relatively clear? So a lot of warrant articles there. So now I will go back to the two that I skipped over. The first one is a, excuse me, the first one is a pollinator bill banning neonicotinoids on any new leased town land. The Pollinator Health Advisory Committee just simply couldn't be here, and I told them that I would be happy to report this on their behalf. So they will come forward with the warrant article. The town does not use neonicotinoids on any of its own land, but if it leased land, that could be a possibility. So this warrant article would prohibit neonicotinoids, which is a pesticide which is harmful to the bee population and other pollinators, and so that will be a warrant article submitted by them. Again, the select board has not reviewed this, we don't, haven't yet taken a position as to whether or not we are going to support it. And the last one, this was put together, I didn't know, would be a representative here, but the prohibition on expansion of fossil fuels, infrastructure for new construction and significant rehabilitation. Alice Kaufman is here this morning, and she is going to come up and briefly speak to you about this warrant article.
So this, we are proposing an article that is to limit the expansion of natural gas infrastructure in Concord by requiring that all new construction and major renovations to be fossil fuel-free. The article does not affect the vast majority of properties in Concord, and it does not require current homeowners or residents to switch fuel types in their homes. This is for new construction and significant renovations only. The measure is the logical next step to ensure that Concord can achieve the stated goals voted in by town meeting in 2017, Article 51. That article compels Concord to meet both the Paris Climate Accord and the State's Global Warming Solutions Act by limiting new greenhouse gas-emitting sources from heat and hot water. We're on track with our municipal light plant to do just that. And in fact, the light plant strategic plan includes what's called beneficial electrification and follows on the heels of a successful program in town to meet more, to help people move off of oil heat to a cleaner burning, all-electric heat pump. We're not alone in proposing this measure. Just a couple of weeks ago, Brookline passed a similar article at their special town meeting. We met with the folks from Brookline to understand their approach and modeled ours closely after theirs. We are also aware that the measure will be on the town meeting warrant in Belmont, another team of people we consulted with in preparing our approach, and other communities are moving forward in Newton and Cambridge. This is our next logical step of how we're going to meet our town's greenhouse gas emission goals for a cleaner, brighter future.
Thank you, Alice.
Right, next, hot off the heels of approval by the guideline subcommittee and the full finance committee, Dean Banfield, the chair, will talk to us about the budget guidelines. Dean?
Thank you, Mike. I think we do have some slides on this, so if you could find those. Trying to do my best to see what I'm speaking to, so sorry if I turn around a little bit. So we can move on to the next slide, it's just an intro. Oh, I have a clicker? Where's my clicker? Oh, my goodness, look at that. Okay, now I have to learn what I'm doing. Forward. There we go. Okay, so just a quickie on how we arrive at a guideline. The finance committee meets regularly through the fall. We start in the, but we start in the summer. This is a new piece this year. We've been working on this for several years now, and we finally have gotten to the point where it has become part of our regular process. In the summer, by July 30th, we establish something that we are identifying as a sustainable growth rate for taxes, and we use that as our guideposts as we go through the consultation on operating budgets. Just to be clear about our, the way in which we do that consultation, the town budget and operating budgets, operating budgets represent about 80% of the levy that we end up spending in the town. We have other things that we spend money on that are outside the operating budget, but this is the major piece of what drives our taxes, is the operating budgets. So we have a consultation with the town manager on their budget and on the school budgets. And then we issue guidelines, which just happened two nights ago. So we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how to get that done faster so that all of the parties can be ready for this meeting and have the numbers, but they were only established two nights ago, so hopefully that's not too much of a problem. So let's talk about the first step. What is a sustainable tax rate? This is something that we adopted in 2018, and in 2019, we really started in earnest to use this policy. It is a rate which maintains the town's economic soundness, financial strength, and flexibility through keeping a level of excess levy limit capacity so that general overrides are not necessary, maintaining a free cash balance, continual investment in ongoing capital needs, and in avoiding burdening taxpayers beyond normal expectations of income growth, and allowing the town to maintain its character without undermining the diversity of our population. And we adopted that two years ago, and then this year, we implemented our first call for what we think would be a sustainable tax rate. This is what we do every year, it's a five-year tax projection. We take all the information that we can assemble, and we do a projection of what we think taxes are gonna look like. So you can see that, starting at last year, it was a little over 3%, but we see it trending mostly up. The midline would be the midpoint, and then we have sort of an aggressive green line that tries to keep taxes in check, and we have a blue line which is, you know, we're drunken sailors and we're going crazy. That did not, there we go. So this year, we voted in July that, given the very, very moderate inflationary cycle that we've been in for several years now, that a five-year target of 2.16 would be a good, sustainable rate for us to be taxed at, but notice how dramatic and really draconian it would be to move us from the tax rate we were at down to a growth rate that dramatic. So when we went through the process of establishing guidelines this year, we decided to try to get down to that rate in a more moderate manner, and this year, we decided we would try to go for three and a quarter. And after two rounds, first setting a preliminary guideline at three and a quarter, after our second meeting where we established our final guideline, we came up with a final guideline of 3.14. And it puts us on something we're calling sort of a glide path to get down to the rate that we're expecting over the next five years. Now, just to be clear about what we mean by a sustainable rate, we will meet every July. We will establish a five-year forward sustainable target. That will change. It will change each year as we evaluate the economic conditions, as we evaluate the interest rate environment, returns on, the inflationary environment, and when that, those factors well exceed the Prop 2.5 limit that causes the town to go through override votes, we will probably recommend rates that are in keeping with the economic conditions. But right now, the economic conditions are showing a very, very moderate inflationary cycle, so we're looking at this rate, and we're trying to pull ourselves towards that line, and we'll do this every year for, with a five-year forward look. So this is the guideline detail. We divvied up our 3.14. The town gets 2.5% for its operating budget. I have the numbers here, so I don't have to stretch and read them. 3.29 for CPS. As I understand, that number right now is a little below the target budget that they're proposing, so they may, there may be, need to be a little work done there. And 3.75 for the district. The reason that the district seems to get like the lion's share, they get a larger piece, is because we're, we're in a year, this year, where there's a slightly larger population of Concord students to Carlisle students, and as a result, the balance of who pays more lands on our shoulders in a rather large way. So we've allocated a little more money in our percentage basis to the district so that it can take that into account as, because that's really our share, that is not the district's budget, that's just our assessment. So if there are any questions, I'll take them, but otherwise, that's the guideline this year. Okay? Thanks, Mike.
So I was reminded as I was sitting that for my remarks and for Alice's remarks, I didn't ask if there were any questions, so I think there is a question. Ms. Miller?
My question's about the articles outlined, but an article that I think some people would hope that the select board might consider, and that has to do with short-term rental properties, and I believe the state has, as of September, allowed additional funding to be raised by localities for short-term rental funding, short-term rental rentals in the community with a community impact fee or surcharge of up to 3%, of which 35% would automatically go to affordable housing. So I think we would ask perhaps that maybe a warrant article would adopt that additional funding for short-term rentals in Concord.
All right, thank you very much. Perhaps you and I could have a few minutes to chat about this a little further afterwards. Were there any other questions? I'm sorry that I didn't ask for them before. All right, so the next on our agenda is to hear from the town manager, Mr. Crane, about the operating and capital budgets for the town.
Mike?
We're sorry. Marsha?
Regarding that short-term rental issue, we currently, the town of Concord currently does not allow short-term rentals. We ask anybody who is advertising on Airbnb to seek a special permit for a bed and breakfast. And so we are already receiving, I guess, taxes on those rentals because they are established as bed and breakfast associations.
Thank you. You ready? Ms. LaFleur is gonna join the town manager?
Yes. Hi, good morning. I'm Stephen Crane, the town manager, and it's great to be here today at this preview meeting. I'm joined by finance director Carrie LaFleur, who was instrumental in helping prepare the draft FY21 town manager's budget that had been submitted to the finance committee for guideline evaluation. And as we go through this, we're also gonna go right into the capital presentation, and I'll invite Kate Hodges up at that point to present on the capital. Oh, I do have a clicker. So I just, I'm really actually pleased to announce that the, as Dean noted, the FY21 town manager's budget as currently drafted does conform with the guidelines set by the finance committee. That was a goal of mine as preparing my first budget here for the town of Concord. And so you can see the numbers up there. I think we're, so it's a pretty modest rate of growth in the, in the tax rate. I can't see the, sorry. So you can see the general fund appropriation is just over 26 million, a difference of about 700,000. One of the things that was somewhat of a challenge was a planned reduction in credits, which are revenues that come into the town's budget from other sources like enterprise funds, and I don't know if Carrie wanted to add a little more to that.
Sure, I think the only thing that we wanted to point out is the town appropriation, while it's mainly funded by general fund revenue, we do have credits and transfers that come in from the enterprise funds. So the, we are meeting the guideline. The general fund increase is going up 2.5%, but when you take into account the credits and transfers that are actually going down, as Stephen mentioned, mostly because of the phase-in of the school resource officer and the four firefighters, we had a plan where over four years, we were gonna draw from that emergency stabilization fund. There's actually quite a decrease of close to 300,000 in the credits and transfers, so if you're looking at an appropriation basis, the overall appropriation increase is 1.48%, but the impact to the general fund is 2.5%, meeting the finance committee's guideline.
And you can see on the pie charts there.
I think this, just for people who like to see pictures, here's a, here's a pictorial representation, and the other piece of information up here is that in the, in the general fund appropriation, we do have about, we have about $1.8 million that is going to capital outlay. So most of it is for operations, and then $1.8 million for capital outlay, and again, that meets the financial policy that we have established for capital spending.
And speaking of pie, there's plenty of muffins and scones left if people are still hungry. So I just want to go through a couple of things that are recommended actions. Oh, you did print a copy. So one of the things that we're doing new for this year is taking facilities maintenance line items and consolidating them under the facilities department. As you all may be aware, a facilities department was created a few years ago, and we've been slowly growing that department over the last couple of years. And so a next phase of that growth of that agency is to take line items from each department that were for building maintenance and building maintenance supplies, and take them out of those department line items and put them in the facilities department line item. And we think that we'll be able to actually achieve an economy of scale by centralizing all of that. The facilities department, as it has grown, has really done an excellent job of handling building issues as they have arisen, and this gives them kind of a new, a new resource to really handle things holistically for the town. So the other thing is, as we are aware, the legal services budget has been strained in FY20, so we are increasing that by about $75,000 to, in anticipation of legal issues that we are reasonably aware may be coming, related to some of, some issues in not only litigation, but also some policy issues such as the Board of Health Regulations. We want to make sure that the town is prepared to meet those challenges. The other thing that was a part of Envision Concord was increasing the town's efforts on economic vitality. The budget for FY21 does include increased appropriation for that. We're looking to really elevate the tourism role into more of a overall economic vitality role, but also increase our resources for tourism so we don't lose ground on that function as well. We also, that it would be the part-time position you see. In finance, the retirement system staff salaries had been paid to the town budget. We're now moving that over completely to the retirement board, and so there's an offset there. And then we are looking to add the land manager position for the Division of Planning and Land Management to, I mean, obviously, the town owns a lot of conservation land and open space, and we don't currently have someone dedicated to the maintenance of those lands. And so we want to make sure that that person, that we have somebody to fulfill that role and meet those service needs, and also do functions related to our tree preservation bylaw. That role is currently played or fulfilled by the building department, which is not really, it's kind of an awkward place for that responsibility, so we're gonna offset the building department's budget and add that to the land manager. So for public safety, there's, as was noted earlier, the town did add a number of firefighters to expand the department to meet service demands. One of the, a next phase of that, of that growth is adjusting the command structure so each shift has an additional supervising officer or lieutenant. That's not an expansion of the workforce, it's simply an elevation of one position on each shift, so that does add a little money to the budget, but it does not increase the number of full-time employees of the department. One position we are adding is a second dispatcher on the overnight shift. Again, this is a service needs obligation, and we want to make sure that as call volumes increase, especially because this police department does dispatch all public safety calls, that we're able to meet those needs in the overnight hours. And then we have, we have a planned reduction from the Emergency Services Stabilization Fund, that's one of the credits we talked about earlier, and we also have a fair amount of attrition savings, which is, you know, we've had some turnover by virtue of retirements and other circumstances, and so when a senior firefighter or police officer retires, and you bring in a new officer or firefighter based on the compensation plan, or firefighter based on the compensation plan, that new officer is going to make less than the one that they're replacing. So that yields some attrition, you know, last year's salary line item is then therefore not as great as, as this year's, or is greater than this year. So those attrition savings we recognize aren't something that's going to happen off into the future because these, these, these employees are going to move through the compensation plan, but it's, it is a, we look at it as kind of a one-time savings here for FY21. So for Department of Public Works, we know that we need to replace the fuel depot and in a decrease in the cost of street lighting due to the installation of LED fixtures, the streetlights, which if you're driving around, you can see CMLP trucks installing them kind of as we speak. They, they have a deadline of year-end to install hundreds of them, and they're doing a great job with that. Human Services, again, attrition savings in the library, and we're looking at a market adjustment for our social service workers. We, we regularly test the marketplace for wages for employees to make sure that we're not only compensating our employees well to attract and retain great, great employees and great talent, but also are we competitive in the marketplace? And social, the social services, the workers in our organization who, as you all know, provide really a crucial service to those in need, really lag behind the market. So that's a kind of an equity adjustment that we're looking to make. So we are, also have, you know, the Salary Reserve Account, that's a part of the general fund budget, and, oh, next slide, yeah. I mean, surprise? Did I, oh, okay, sorry. I'm usually, I'm usually not this bad at doing this, I apologize. I usually, I'm used to facing the screen, which I almost was going to go over there and give the presentation. So we have a Salary Reserve Account. One of the things we're looking at, as I mentioned, is salaries throughout the organization. We're looking at engaging in a classification compensation study. And so that study that we're going to be engaged in, I think, over the, in the coming months will inform any salary adjustments that we're going to be looking to make. So we haven't nailed all that down, but we are actively working on it. Again, the goal is attract and retain people who will provide a high level of service to the Town of Concord and to its residents. So as, just in summary, the total attrition savings, about $350,000. There's a, some positions here that we've gone through that yield that attrition savings. So you can see that there's seven new firefighters, 14 police officers. Again, the, when you have that, those kinds of numbers, it, it does add up to quite a bit. A new town manager, and then we have a Special Collections Curator. And then, like I said, this will not continue into the future, but, and it is offset somewhat by increases in training. When we bring on new firefighter or new police officer, they do require additional training as they integrate into their role, and so there is an additional cost with that. So looking ahead, what's next? So January 17th, it's a submission of the Town Manager's General Fund Budget and Capital to the Select Board. February 16th, Enterprise Fund requests are due to the Town Manager. That's, you know, water, sewer, solid waste, electric, public access, BD, all those funds. So we haven't really started work on the Enterprise Funds in a, in a formal way. And then March 9th and 16th, there'll be public hearings for the town and school and CPC. And then March 23rd, public hearings for the Enterprise Fund as we march toward the annual town meeting. Are there any questions on the operating budget?
Over the last few years, it's been noted that we keep on adding FTEs to the payroll. I'm curious, first off, it's not clear from what was presented today how many new FTEs are being added, because they could be part-time positions, they could be full-time positions.
Two.
Two. Does that mirror?
Excuse me for interrupting. Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, Martin Botfield, 47 Walden Terrace.
Thank you.
Does that mirror the increase in the town population? And if so, great. If not, can you please provide a justification? Because each year, we seem to be increasing our headcount for reasons that I don't quite understand, and it certainly doesn't appear to mirror the increase in town population.
Sure. It's a great question. I would say that town population and service needs aren't necessarily a straight-line correlation. When you have a population that is aging, it requires a higher level of service in certain areas, not the least of which is public safety. The other thing is you have areas that have shifted in terms of priorities based on the feedback from the town, and so those areas of shifting priorities may not have the service levels that are needed to meet those, to meet those priorities. So you make adjustments in the headcount to accommodate that.
Thank you. One would then assume that over the last decade or so of those priorities...
Scott, I'm going to interrupt you with it, but we're not here to debate the matter. We're here to be informed about the warrant articles that are going to be presented at town meeting.
So we are being presented with something that is finished, and we will...
No, there are public hearings, as the town manager just mentioned, on March 9th and 16th.
I'm sorry, I was not present for that because as the, as the town website advertised up until a day ago, this meeting started at 9:00, and then it was changed to 8:30. So I didn't miss those introductions.
We didn't do it today.
Well, it was done since Wednesday, when I last checked.
So what's, what's the point here? I'm sorry.
The point is that I apologize for not being aware of the fact that there will be additional meetings, but one should also be aware that if you advertise a meeting at 9:00, it should start at 9:00.
Okay, there are public hearings where we will have a chance to talk about the pros and cons of various warrant articles. And of course, at town meeting, you have the opportunity to raise questions and question the warrant articles itself. Is there another question?
Yes, please. Carlin Reed, 83 Witsen. This is a question about the transfer and credits slide that you showed earlier, where I think there was a transfer credit amount of about $293,000. My understanding is that, well, perhaps I need some clarification, does that mean there's another $300,000 that could be allocated from the town's budget to something like Emerson Field, which was zeroed out in the CPA allocation?
So the, the transfers in credits, the amount was correct. It was 292 or 293. Those are, so there, there is work that is done by staff that are, their salaries are funded through the general fund, but it's being done on behalf of Enterprise Funds. So in, in my office, in Finance, we do payroll for the, the whole town. So some of the payroll work that is being done by staff in my office that are paid 100% by the general fund is payroll for the Enterprise Funds. So the cost of that work is charged as a transfer. So there, there, if I'm understanding your, your question correctly, there really isn't, there's an, there's an opportunity for general fund staff to do more work on behalf of the Enterprise Funds, but those transfers in credits wouldn't be available but for that work. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Crane, are you ready to do the capital? Is Matt coming, coming to ask a question, or are you just getting?
Good question.
So are you ready to do the capital plan?
Yeah, I'll invite Deputy Town Manager Kate Hodges up to take the lead on this one.
Is this mine? Oh, yeah, okay. Good morning, Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. This article will relate to an appropriation for capital funds, which the Town Manager and Finance Director just talked about. New this year, we will have what we're considering cash capital or non-borrowing monies that were generally, in the past years, put into the operating budget, and then the borrowing authorization. So we are looking for about 1.8 to be funded within the operating budget, those slides you just saw previously, and we're looking for $4,350,000 to be sought from borrowing. This is the snapshot of the town's multi-year plan, and it's very small. So we will make sure that when we have the hearings, that there's a larger, larger slide that people can look at too. But essentially, the gray all the way on the left-hand side shows the funding that was appropriated last fiscal year, and then it brings us through, through the next five fiscal years, and then sort of future year planning. Understand that this is our best estimate of how things will go, based on the data that we have today when we're doing this. But it really is a kind of a fluid document. Things such as White Pond and that donation come in, and that wasn't something necessarily that five years prior we would have had on the sheets, and so we adjust accordingly. This is the list of the cash capital articles, which were inter-dispersed in the general fund presentation. We'll go into greater detail at the public hearing related to what specific items these charges represents, but I can say that they are certainly within the, within the amounts that we had had in past years. The remaining 4.35 million that we have as borrowing will be allocated among the eight projects that are listed here, and they are proposed throughout the Divisions of Park and Open Space, Planning and Land Management, Public Works, and the Fire Department. So the massive presentation that will happen relative to all of these projects is still to come, but I can take you through just kind of pictures of, of what we have. So Project 1 is for rubberized surfacing at the Emerson Playground, which is going to be mandatory by the Architectural Access Bureau. Actually, it became mandatory effective January 1st of 2019. Project 2 relates to the ongoing development of Jarrow Park. Specifically, the blue areas that we have here are relative to the town CPC application of $500,000 for this year. And the red is Phase 1, which is the additional appropriation that we're asking for in this year's capital planning. This is sort of an overview of what we have spent and what we have year-to-date for Jarrow. I think there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of numbers that are thrown out there, much like the capital plan. It's an ever-evolving document. We thought that certain amounts would be necessary. We do soil testing and sampling, and I'm, you know, happy to say that some of the costs are down and some of the costs are up, and, and we're going from there. Again, greater detail in that when we, when we go through. This is the monetary breakdown of, of Jarrow, so monies that were expended either from town capital or CPC to date, monies that are funded in the green, and then the black are monies that are still being sought. The next project is the restroom that's at the Rideout Field. We estimated in the past couple of years that over 50,000 users have come and gone from that park. The bathrooms are relatively outdated, as you can see, and we're looking to remodel, add additional facilities, and have them be with sustainable, excuse me, with sustainable fixtures and, and accessibility. Project 4 is the Water Pond dredging. This is a multi-year project. We have already received some monies from both CPC and the town capital. More is going to be needed, but we're, this year, we're focusing on obtaining money to be able to dredge the two spots that are circled in red. White Pond accessibility, I'm happy to report that as of Tuesday of this week, the dissolution of White Pond Associates and the subsequent conveyance of their property has been approved by the Supreme Court for the state of Massachusetts, which has taken an excessively long time, and WPA has been gracious in working with the town on that. So relatively soon, we will have a vote of the Select Board to accept that property officially, and then we will be the proud owners on paper. Although I will say that this last summer of operating it was very informative, and I, I think, I think we have a good plan. That being said, after having lived through the White Pond quasi-ownership over the past year, we've really shifted our plans from that of a restroom facility and ADA walkway to a restroom facility and stormwater management plan. The runoff from the beach, the pond health overall, and the puddling and, and beach washout is pretty significant and only getting worse. And so unfortunately, or fortunately, depending, you know, we, we have to kind of shift gears on that, which is why we had come back to CPC regarding stormwater management, and also will be discussing in greater detail sort of our, our plans and how they've evolved to try to capture stormwater, treat it, and, and head it off before it heads into the pond. The Fire Department is looking for a midlife refurbishment of Ladder 1 and an ambulance replacement that's on their general maintenance schedule. And the Roads Program is looking for 1.73 million, and that is to do the Prescott Road and Mino Road, Peter Spring, Hubbard, Butternut Circle, and then parking areas at the Emerson Umbrella, Fairyland, and the Stowe Street Annex. If anybody has any high-level questions on that, that's great. If not, more to come. Thank you.
A lot going on. All right. Next, Community Preservation Committee. You folks just met last week, right? Finally, it's good. Thank you.
I'm Pinchini for the Community Preservation Committee, so I may not have all the information, but I have quite a bit. And there, there are two handouts. One is an eight-and-a-half by 11. It's a kind of hard to read, and then a larger 11 by 17, if, if you're like me and need to be able to read better. Thirteen applications were received this year by the Community Preservation Committee. There are 10 being recommended, nine fully funded, and one funding for 50%. I'll go through those that are being funded. The Community Housing Authority, Concord Housing Authority, for their community housing on Jarrow Park land that's been, being transferred. The Town of Concord, the Regional Housing Services, 50% of the funds come from the CPC and 50% from the town. Total of 20,000. The First Parish Church in Concord, we're restoring and repainting and gilding the Belfry of 75,000, Holy Family Parish. They requested 150, this is the 50% funding, it's 75,000. Friends of Minuteman National Park, Butrick Hill, Butrick House Gardens, and Hardscape Rehab, 70, 100,000. The Jarrow Park improvements, fully funded at 500,000. Water respond dredging, fully funded at 500,000. Design for the Assabet River Pedestrian Bridge, 250,000, fully funded. Minuteman Arc Human Services for a recreation, outdoor oasis, fully funded at 100,000. And then staff and technical support, 40,000. So the total amount being recommended is 1,960,000. The amount available in CPA is estimated at 2,840,000, and the current difference is 124,000. That 100,000 has already been designated for future land acquisition, so the remaining 24,000 is a reserve in case we do not receive the funds that we're anticipating. The funds do not arrive from the state until November of 2020, so this is just to make sure that there is sufficient funds available to cover all the projects that are being recommended. Any questions?
That's a lot of work the committee has to go through to get, to get to that point. That's, and speaking about a lot of work, next is Matt Johnson for the Planning Board as a plethora of warrant articles.
Okay, Matt Johnson, Concord Planning Board. So this year, let's see, we have 10 warrant articles that we're bringing before the town meeting, we think. There is a actual summary memo that's available on this table if you're curious later on to keep a record of that, but I will briefly go through these. I think that 10 is a somewhat large number for our committee to bring, but not drastically higher than usual. But what is unusual this year is there are very few of these that are likely to go on the consent calendar. So from a, you know, town meeting preview perspective, that's significant, potentially significant. Okay, so let me go through each of these in turn. First couple of these... to keep a record of that, but I will briefly go through these. I think that 10 is a somewhat large number for our committee to bring, but not drastically higher than usual. But what is unusual this year is there are very few of these that are likely to go on the consent calendar. So from a, you know, town meeting preview perspective, that's significant, potentially significant. Okay, so let me go through each of these in turn. First couple of these, oops, sorry, are to enable the recommendations of the Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee, that report that was published last year, and we've moved ahead on some of the big idea number two, I believe it is, recommendations around improving housing choice in Concord. So the initiatives that we're proposing, the first is about allowing an additional dwelling unit. So, an additional dwelling unit meaning like an in-law apartment type of thing. And so this would allow a unit of up to 750 square feet to be constructed, either new or built within a unit of housing by right, as long as all the other dimensional and owner occupancy and other short-term rental restrictions were abided by. This could be in an external structure, or it could be part of the main building. The owner would have to either live in the accessory unit or in the main housing unit. There also are provisions for special permit to be granted to make a larger unit of up to 1,000 square feet, or to deal with cases in which the unit might be in the setback area of the property, or be built on a lot that had less than the required amount of square footage. So that's the first one. The second one is about two-family housing. So two-family housing is, again, another dwelling unit on the property, but it's a different style. So in this case, the units would not have a size restriction, and they would have to be together with a common wall. In other words, a duplex, okay? They would still have to meet all the dimensional requirements of the property, but there would not be an owner occupancy requirement or any other kinds of basic restrictions. But given all of these kinds of maybe bigger impacts, two things that we're proposing is, one, is to limit this to the resident C residential districts, in other words, the sort of in-town districts, and then the second is to require special permit in all cases. So, next one is about planned residential developments. So for planned residential developments, what our bylaw amendment will likely do is to create an entirely new Section 10 to replace the existing planned residential development bylaw. However, the changes are not wholesale changes. It's just that they're throughout the text, and so it would be pretty hard to just sort of do them as puts and takes. But what we're proposing to do is to increase the open space requirements. Currently, there's 25% required, but in our review, we found that all non-affordable housing-related proposals in the past that were already approved met at least a 33% open space threshold. And actually, there's some discussions about perhaps that being 35%. We still haven't voted. And so raising the open space requirement. Secondly, because that is actually one of the key objectives of planned residential developments, is to provide open space where otherwise there would not be open spaces outside. The second is to provide some means of mandating or encouraging low-impact development and green building design, and so we're looking at what area towns have done in order to adopt language that's appropriate for that. The third is to change the permit granting authority for the special permits for planned residential developments from the Zoning Board of Appeals to the Planning Board. So today, the Planning Board makes a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then the Zoning Board of Appeals grants the permit. And this is, you know, both a long-winded process, and it also results in kind of occasionally different evaluations by the different committees. So this would simplify things. And it also kind of goes by this principle that you'll see with the Hammerhead lots as well. What we're trying to align is that the Planning Board deals with kind of new developments, and the ZBA deals with kind of appeals from existing bylaws for other kinds of property needs. And then, that's not all. With planning residential developments, we're also going to see if we can grant bonus density for certain kinds of things that we'd like to see more often in these developments, such as limited dwelling size. We're seeing PRD proposals with very large dwellings. We're also trying to discourage the construction of large garages, and so maybe we can incent this. The other, the final thing is that currently, even though we have a pretty comprehensive review process for PRDs, we actually don't do a formal site plan review. And that's odd, because we do site plan review for lots of other projects. So we're proposing to change Table One use regulations to require site plan review. Okay. So now moving on, those are probably the big ones, okay? But there's still others of interest. This is one that might go on the consent calendar, just like we're proposing to change planned residential developments to the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval, also Hammerhead Lot applications. We proposed to take that, and the Zoning Board was very pleased that we might take that off their plate, so that's one that's coming. The next is fences and walls. So currently, there are no restrictions on the height of a fence or a wall that you can put up around your property, and so that, there have been concerns raised about that and the impact on neighbors and so on. So this bylaw amendment would restrict the construction of laws, of walls that are, you know, to about four feet of height, and fences to seven feet of height above the existing grade within front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks, okay? So, the next one is just a clarification. Not sure whether or not this will go on the consent calendar. It depends on if there are people that have objections around it, and we'll find out in our public hearings. It's basically that currently, our bylaw prohibits trailers from being parked on a property, but that was never really intended to prevent someone from, you know, that had a camper or, you know, a horse trailer or something from being able to park their trailer. The intent was to prevent kind of, you know, habitation or unregistered trailers that would just sit there forever, okay? So the goal here is to clarify that in the bylaw, to just state that it's really only trailers without a valid registration or that are used for habitation on the property that would be prohibited. Next one is a request from the West Concord Advisory Committee about making an additional use available within the industrial zoning district of West Concord. That is the district that's immediately behind the Village Center. It's a pretty compact area, and that would allow a grocery store of no more than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area in that industrial district by special permit. And then the next one is just to clarify, or an addition of a new group. Basically, we have a number of organizations, religious organizations, town organizations, et cetera, that can hold fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers and dances at their facilities, subject to certain conditions, and now we're going to add philanthropic organizations to that list. Doubt that this will be very controversial, and hopefully will go on the consent calendar. The next one is putting into the bylaw the criteria that we already use informally to evaluate relief from parking applications. So when a business seeks to have less parking than our bylaw requires, they can apply for relief from parking. We have a criteria such as, you know, do they have off-site parking that they provide for employees? Do they provide access to public transit alternatives, things like that, that can really help motivate the need for less parking? We'd love to have less parking, but we also don't want to create a parking catastrophe. So these criteria, we found over the past two years, have been very helpful in providing a more objective means of responding to these applications, and so we would put them into the bylaw rather than just using them as an informal set. And then the final one is to expand the Thoreau Depot Business District out a little bit to the east. And the reason that this is being proposed is to enable a project that I think might be popular in the town, which is to change the configuration of the access to the Starbucks at Thoreau Street and Sudbury Road. To move the, so basically, one, you know, to move the outward access very much further away from the intersection, but in order to do that, the business district needs to be extended to encompass where that driveway would be. So that's kind of what motivated originally this idea. However, it also was the case that the business district boundaries, really, they were originally drawn with like, okay, it's 50 feet from here or whatever, not with regard to the property's boundaries, and so we're going to also extend to encompass the boundary around the gas station across the street and stuff like that. So this is important as well, because there is a MAPC grant project that's working right now to look at redevelopment of the Thoreau Depot Business District over the next couple of years, and so having a clearly defined business district would be helpful. So, those are our 10 Planning Board warrant articles. Again, there's a memo on the table if you want to learn more. Any questions?
Yeah, I have two questions regarding the, Mark Galis, 62, Prescott Road. I have two questions regarding the improvements to the PRD bylaw, which I very much support. I like a lot of what's being said about open space and all that. One of them is, could the board consider specifically referring to the existing town tree preservation bylaw and requiring that the calculations about, you know, outer setbacks on a single property be treated? And as far as I know, the existing bylaw does apply to PRDs. There's been some discussion. Nobody's really presented anything else, and perhaps the Select Board and Town Manager could, you know, ask the town council to check whether it applies, and if it does apply, put in the PRD bylaws revised somewhere that these calculations should be done for mitigation of tree loss around the boundaries that affect neighbors. The second point is very simple. Could we put into bylaw something where as soon as somebody applies for a PRD special permit, that a public sign be posted at the site, so that in addition to, you know, letters just to abutters, the people in general know that there's a special permit for a PRD in the offing, and they could look on the town website and see details.
Again, we're trying to understand the warrant article, not debating taking out or putting in. Perfectly fine suggestion. Take them up with you.
Yeah, and I do want to mention, we did have a public forum on the housing articles last month, so we have collected public input, and we will, we have three more meetings, in fact, before the warrant closes, so we expect to make some further adjustments. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. So next is the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee. Keith. As Keith is coming to the table, this was also a warrant article that we passed last year to establish this committee, and so.
Thanks very much, Mike, and thanks all for being here this morning. The, you've heard about, hold on. You've heard about three other articles that were passed at this year's annual town meeting. There was a package of four dealing with housing. Three of them were funding sources. One of them was the establishment of Affordable Housing Trust Fund by adopting the state statute. And so all four of those need to be brought forward in some form, again, for the 2020 town meeting. You've heard Mike talk about the Select Board discussing a request for an additional $50,000, $500,000 for housing, and to continue to pursue the home rule legislation for the real estate transfer fee and the building permit surcharge, with the idea being that if those new funding sources are adopted, they would go into an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Town meeting this year voted to accept the state statute for an Affordable Housing Trust, and the next step would be to bring back to town meeting a proposed town bylaw which would establish a trustees to administer that. And I think it's worth mentioning that the work that was done over the last couple of years from the Affordable Housing Funding Committee, that their goal was that Concord needs predictable, sustainable revenue sources for housing. So that's really what we're all about here. Let's see. Okay, so we have a five-member study committee that is working with our Select Board liaison, Linda Escobedo, and we appreciate the support of the, of our Select Board for this effort. We've begun to meet with a number of other housing committees and stakeholders. We are looking at proposing, and we will have it, we will vote next week, to adopt our recommended town bylaw and present it to the Select Board on December 16th. But the purpose of an Affordable Housing Trust is to provide for the preservation and creation of affordable housing for the benefit of low and moderate income households. It's to receive and disperse funds and real property that's dedicated to affordable housing, and that those would be segregated into a separate fund. The proposal that we're working on for a bylaw would establish a board of trustees of between five and seven members, the actual number to be determined by the Select Board, who would be the appointing authority. To the extent possible, members, the trustees should have backgrounds, we feel, in affordable housing, financial, legal, real estate, and development expertise. It would not be a requirement, but rather a suggestion that those be reflected in the membership. There would be local oversight with the work of the trustees. It would require Select Board approval of the trustees' actions when buying or selling property. That the idea of an Affordable Housing Trust is that you, is that you don't need to wait for the annual town meeting to acquire a property for affordable housing purposes if there is money available in the trust for the, for action by the trustees, and we felt that that action ought to have oversight by requiring a Select Board approval. The treasurer-collector would have custody of the funds, and there would be an annual audit. We're looking at the timeline, as I say, that we'll be submitting our draft bylaw within the next week or so. There'll be a number of hearings that we're looking forward to participating in. If town meeting in April votes to approve that bylaw, establishing the Affordable Housing Trust, the trustees, there would still be some additional time after that. The Attorney General has 90 days to approve a bylaw that's approved locally, and so it might be by the end of the summer before that happens, and it might be the following year, it might be the 2021 town meeting, which is the first time you'll see articles from the Affordable Housing Trust before you. the Affordable Housing Trust before you. But what's, and I want to thank Liz Rust, our able staff support from the Regional Housing Services Office for putting this together to us. I have to say, I'm new to Concord town government. I was, I'm not new to town government. For 37 years, I was the town manager elsewhere, including just up the road in Littleton. No questions about Nagog Pahn today. But it is, and I'm also, for the last three years, have been president to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which I know has done a lot of great work in Concord. But we're adding a new entity to the pantheon of groups in Concord that deal with affordable housing. And so we're very interested in having this be a collaborative effort of figuring out where does this new group fit? What's the vision of what we want to accomplish for affordable housing in the town? And then to take a step back and say, well, what unique tools that an affordable, that only an Affordable Housing Trust can do in a community? What do we want to have done here in Concord? So appreciate very much the task from--
I have a question. Can you go back a couple of seconds?
Oh, we're both going back. Okay.
So my question is, you say, require a select board approval for buying and selling real property.
Yes.
What about for dispersing cash?
The question is, would the, that the draft bylaw that the study committee is working on would require select, in the form that we're proposing, would require a select board approval of acquiring property? The draft that we have does not currently provide that we would also seek select board approval on expending the, expending the funds. That does, that's self-limiting, though, to whatever the fund balance is. And if we're, and the largest purchase, use of funds we would envision would involve acquiring, you know, acquiring property for which we'd go back to the select board. But for other uses of the property that our draft does not currently provide for, also for select board approval.
Thank you. Thanks, Keith. All right. So next, Steve Lado, talk to us about Minuteman Technical High School. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Douglas MacArthur once said, you know, old soldiers never die, they just fade away. I think it's the same with old town managers, too. Somehow Keith and I retired, and we're still doing stuff. It's just amazing. So at any rate, I don't have too much to report on in terms of Minuteman. It's been a very busy and exciting year so far. I've only been to three school committee meetings as the new Concord rep. But, you know, we opened a new school, which is always very interesting, very exciting. Unfortunately, and I did report to the Board of Selectmen, I think back in September, perhaps, that Belmont was reconsidering withdrawing from the Minuteman District. And unfortunately, a couple of weeks ago, their town meeting decided that they will go ahead and withdraw from the Minuteman District. And that will be effective this June 30, June 30, 2020, which obviously will impact the FY '21 budget. Right now, the freshman class, incoming freshman class, the class that's sitting here right now, has 192 kids. It's 41% increase from the prior year, which probably is attributable to the new school, the six new students, six freshman students from Concord. Budget process is really just beginning for Minuteman Tech. Superintendent Kine does a bottom-up budgeting process, so all the division heads have submitted their budgets. The preliminary budgets, the preliminary requests are up about 9.5%. Superintendent has not reviewed the budget, nor has the school committee. I am a member of the Finance Subcommittee of Minuteman, so we'll be starting to review some of these budgets next week, in fact. But as we all know, there are certain budget drivers, health insurance being one of them. Minuteman is a member of a health trust with other vocational tech school districts, have not had any preliminary numbers in terms of an increase on health insurance. Teachers' contract is up June 30 of 2020, so obviously that will have an impact. We haven't started bargaining yet. I'm also on the collective bargaining subcommittee as well. Transportation costs are obviously a big issue, especially with a large geographic school district like Minuteman going all the way out to Bolton and Lancaster. They're out to bid right now on the bus contract for next year. Similarly, with the security contract for the new school and security systems, and actually security guards are out to bid as well. So based on the very preliminary 9.5% increase by the division heads, the preliminary Concord assessment for FY '21 would be $1,258,000, which is about a 17.3% increase, about $185,000. And 5% of that roughly could be attributable to the fact that Belmont has, will be withdrawn. So there'll be nine member towns as opposed to 10 right now. But as I said, we're just starting the budget process. I know that the superintendent wants to have a budget that just really reflects the impact of student growth and not necessarily any new programs and new activities. So our game plan is our subcommittee will have recommendation on the budget by the end of January. Early February, the school committee will have a public hearing on the budget and then vote a budget mid-February.
Okay. That's a very large increase compared to what we normally see.
Right. It's very preliminary. Don't--
I know. Still, thank you, Steve. Any questions? All right. Next, we have the school budgets and capital budgets. Laurie?
I'm Laurie Hunter, Superintendent of Schools. Jared Stans here with me, our Director of Finance and Operations. First, I always want to start with a thank you. We're so appreciative of all the support we receive and grateful for that. Before we get into the actual articles, I thought it would just help you to frame where we are in the process. Thanks to the snowstorm, we have not had our public hearing yet, so that's scheduled for Tuesday night. I expect that the school committee will be trying to vote budgets on our, at our December 17th meeting. So so far, they've had one presentation of the superintendent's recommended budget, and that's what I'm reflecting here this morning. The capital articles are also on both of those agendas for the 10th and 17th. So there's lots of opportunity for discussion to come if we don't answer your questions this morning. So in looking at the Concord Public School budget, this is our pre-K to eight budget. You can see the number from last year. We have proposed a $40 million, $782,874 budget versus the roughly $39,000 from last year. We are currently, as Dean mentioned, we're about $100,000 apart from each other. So we are above the guideline at the moment. We will continue that conversation at those upcoming school committee meetings. Just in terms of what those numbers look like, and I'm not going to go deep into any of this unless you ask me, ask us to. Overall, we're bringing in a 3.5% increase. We feel very good about that increase. We're managing contract negotiations that are not settled, so we've had to use placeholders in that example. We've done a lot of work with special education to return students to district and are actively watching our savings fiscally improve as well as service to students improve. We're feeling really confident that this is a level service budget that's come in at a reasonable number. In terms of capital articles at the K eight schools, we're living within the town manager's capital budget of $900,000. We do not expect to need a separate warrant article this year. And I'm going to just say probably because we're going to bring a special town meeting up for a new middle school, so I'm not going to act like we're not asking for anything when we certainly will be. But within the article from the town manager, we're really heavily focused right now on HVAC upgrades at Thoreau and Alcott. Those are our older two elementary schools, and they're just frankly outdated and need to be replaced so that we're not only more efficient and sustainable, but simply more effective at keeping those climate systems up and running the way they should be. We're looking to do some integrated playground work at Thoreau. That's a space, we've added some special education programming with students with more significant disabilities, and it's important to us to provide playground access in a way that we currently aren't able to. You heard Kate mention rubberized surfaces and things like that, so we need to be looking at that there as well. And then the standing monies that we leave in for all the unpredictables at the middle school, because we just never know. The good news is that eventually, if there's a new middle school, those will come off. So that's our overview of the CPS budgets. At the high school, we had a lot of moving pieces at the high school building this budget. The benefits of the state legislators continuing to look at funding formulas, as it has benefited the town on the Concord public side, it's also benefiting the region. So we've had revenue increases come in that both benefited us this year and will likely benefit us next year once we see how the new law plays out. In addition, our special education savings has been very significant there as we've brought online programs to keep students here or return them from out of district. So we were able to actually bring in a budget at the high school, $150,000 below the finance committee guideline, which they readily happily adjusted their number the other night. So we're pleased with that. We felt strongly we weren't going to ask for money we didn't need. Again, a level service budget and maintaining all the high-quality programming that we have. Dean mentioned some of the moving pieces, too, with the assessments that happened due to enrollment. So the actual percentage increase this year is 2.18% to the overall operating budget. That's before you start adding in debt or doing anything with enrollment numbers and the regional agreement. So you can see that that's, that's a pretty solid low number. Again, there's a placeholder in there. We actually have aligned the CTA and the CCTA, both bargaining units of teachers, are now synced up to do salary negotiations in the same year. So we have this coming spring some pretty substantial salary discussions to have as well as other contractual items. But we thought that, that was a mutual agreement and one that I think is going to be positive for everybody. So the overall look is in terms, it looks higher to Concord because of the assessment increase. There's about a $270,000 increase simply based on the data coming out of the October 1st enrollments. And this is going to be an ongoing discussion. You'll remember, two years ago, it was about a half a million dollar increase. Last year, that leveled back off and the increase swung back to Carlisle. This year, it's back to Concord. We anticipate Concord's going to continue to have to deal with the fact that Carlisle's enrollment's dropping and there's little increases to Concord's. This is not huge numbers of kids creating these swings. It's usually around 20 kids at most, but a percentage of a budget of this size does have certain impact. So when you look at where we ended up overall, before, debts included, 3.75%. The high school debt continues to reduce, so that actually lowers that number once we include it at a three, just a little over a 3% increase. And then my favorite topic is our warrant article at the high school. We are reviewing again our work of last year. You'll recall, we put a warrant article forward for paving of the roadway and an additional parking lot. It is too many clickers up here when, what you do here doesn't fit there. It lost by 12 votes at town meeting, so we've been reconsidering what our options are for this year. As of right now, the school committee's talking on separating those two, and they've decided that based on student need and impact to students and the parking stress that we continue to face on a daily basis, that is where they're leaning towards proposing, is not putting the roadway portion forward, but just the parking lot portion forward. We have multiple discussions to have over the coming weeks as to where we land on that. We're reworking numbers and trying to fine-tune what that, those costs would be. And I expect that final vote will happen by the 17th. So that's a very high-level view of what we've been talking about with a lot more opportunity for discussion to come. I'm happy to take any questions. Okay?
You're off the hook.
I'm off the hook, thank you.
Thank you very much, Laurie. Righty, next, we hear from the retirement board. Peter?
My name is Peter Fulton. Been on the retirement board, I guess, 20-plus years. I'm a resident of 31 Winthrop Street. And my past employer, the fire chief, will attest to my lack of computer skills here. Consequently, I don't have a PowerPoint. I do, I didn't know my audience here today, but I have a number of three-to-four-page handouts that has a report from our actuarial for what we're proposing here and so forth. But I'm going to try and summarize what I have for you. Keep in mind, the town of Concord's retirement system encompasses four employee groups, primarily town of Concord employees, employees at the school system that are non-contractual, in other words, primarily non-teachers is another way to look at that. And a third group is the Concord Housing Authority. That's a smaller component of our overall membership. So we're one of 104 systems in the state, and we are mandated by the state language, statute that was implemented in 1983 to be fully funded or to target our balance to be fully funded by the year 2030. I like to consider ourselves well on the way to that. We are 85% funded as we speak now, and that, if you're into lists, that has us in the top five performing systems in the state. I attributed a lot of that to Carrie LaFleur and her predecessor, Tony Legalbo, but I'll take some of the credit. So we're doing well towards our funding schedule, but as you know, anything could happen in the investment world, and that's where we rely on most of our proceeds to come from. So what we're proposing here today is it's a, we've had it prepared by our board attorney, but it's very simply stated. We've been fortunate enough to afford our members a 3% COLA increase every year, but it is only based on the first $12,000 of the individual's pension. If you do the math quickly, that's not much of a nugget, but it is a nugget of $360 a year for, for the individual. What we're proposing here is to increase the COLA base to $14,000. So an individual would be receiving typically 3% on the first $14,000 of their COLA base. Again, if you're into lists of the 104 systems in Massachusetts, 30% are remaining at 12% COLA base, whereas 70% of the systems statewide have a COLA base greater than 12%, okay? Pardon me, $12,000. Now, if this was to be endorsed by town meeting, it would, the calculations we've come up with here, it would-- let me stop from the beginning here again, excuse me. This COLA base of $12,000 has been in existence since 1987. The current average pension in Concord is $28,000. And that's kind of a deceptive figure because there's been a lot of large earners that have retired recently, town managers, three or four department heads that tend to inflate that statistic. And another thing to keep in mind here when you consider this is recipients of public pensions in Massachusetts will most likely have any social security benefits dramatically reduced due to social security stipulations called the WEP and the GPO, the windfall elimination provision and the government pension offset, which do greatly affect any municipal pension recipient. So here's the, I'd like, I will, in fact, have this better prepared with the PowerPoint at town meeting time, but the cost of, the cost of increasing the COLA base to $14,000 for Concord households will be approximately $40 per year per household over the year for Concord households will be approximately $40 per year per household over the 11-year period. So I won't opine here, but I will, I think that's pretty reasonable. And again, another point here is individuals who become members of the Massachusetts Public Pension System on or after April 2, 2012, will be effectively funding their own retirement benefits. By that I mean they contribute 9% of their salary to the pensions contribution and an additional 2% on any income over $30,000. So they effectively fund their own pension. What else can I say here? I honestly didn't know what the audience was to be here today, my first time doing this. But I do have a number of, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to have the endorsement of the Finance Committee. I see a couple of members here from the Finance Committee, and certainly the endorsement of the Select Board, but that's why I have these informational packets and be glad to distribute them. Try to answer any questions also.
Well, I think the time for endorsements for all of the warrant articles comes much later in the process, of course.
All right.
I would certainly encourage you to get your warrant article defined and get it circulated to the various committees so they have a chance to look at it. And then for the public hearing, I suppose you'd be on the Finance Committee's public hearing, March 9 or 16, I'm not sure.
I anticipated that, I didn't, I didn't know the audience.
That's great, that's perfect, letting us know it's coming. That's why we're, why we're here today.
Okay, no questions.
You took my agenda.
I did.
Without that, I don't know what's going on. Thanks, Peter, good to see you. Mr. Ring, you're up with the Public Works Commission.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Steve Ring. I reside at 12 Dalton Road, and I'm the Chair of the Department of Public Works Commission. This year, Public Works will be essentially putting forth a fairly routine set of articles. Each individual item would be addressing the water fund, sewer fund, sewer improvement fund, solid waste fund, and road revolving fund. And it gives us a great opportunity at the hearings to kind of tell the public what each of these services have been providing and performing during the year and what we're looking towards for next year. So that's, that's it for this evening. Thank you.
The last, we did not receive any submitted citizen petitions. Of course, the warrant just opened this morning, so that's not necessarily unusual. But I just will ask, are there any citizens who have petitions that they? You do? Well, come on back out, Mr. Ring. You can do whatever you'd like.
Steve Ring, 12 Dalton Road. I never thought I would ever do a citizen's petition, but I think recently I've been concerned about our cellular tower zoning bylaw and the, essentially, the restriction of the community to be able to access information on that network that's out there and available to us in the town of Concord. And I think it's time with the way technology has been really drastically changing around us of how we deal with wireless technology and how that impacts the zoning bylaw as well as, you know, other services that may be using that. So I think I'd like to develop or make modifications or some kind of article that really addresses that and as well as come up, develop a system in that article or review process that addresses this, this perception of health concerns regarding this, this issue as well. So it's going to be a comprehensive review of what we have and kind of my thoughts on what the town should do to make that, make some revisions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So any additional questions or comments?
Mike?
Yes, Susan?
I just had a question about the, there was a lot of really good and deep-dive material provided today, and where can citizens access those PowerPoints that we saw?
Online.
Is it in the Select Board?
Whereabouts?
They'll be in the Town Meeting tab on the website.
Thank you.
And I'll remind you to mark your calendars for the public hearings. And if any of the articles that are, that I mentioned are of interest to you that the Select Board is taking up, we'll be discussing them on the 16th, and we will probably be voting them on the 30th, although we might vote some on the 16th that are non-controversial.
Of December.
Of December.
Of December, what did I say? I just didn't, December, okay? So our meeting on the 16th and the 30th. Thank you all very much for coming.